Just because he's gonna talk about his timeline.
Okay.
House is so quiet.
Why?
Walks in the morning now.
I know.
What?
I was asking my B F S.
What's that?
Just on you, both don't fit next to each other.
Don't.
I kid you not, when my dog died, he took walks every day. And I kept looking at him. He's also dying.
No, I don't. I'm okay.
I used to walk in the dark.
Well, I went to the gym for a second.
Okay, all right, and you're all right.
Yeah, but yeah, it's thank you for the walk.
How old was your dog?
Just shy of twelve.
Oh, yeah.
Cancer.
Yeah, no, mine too.
Yeah, not long enough.
Oh, no, it's pulling out.
I was hoping to get.
Oh, she did give me water, that's good.
Okay, I understand.
All right, let me pull up. Can, do we have the paper copy of the agenda out there? Can someone grab me a paper copy of the, just the agenda sheet, so I don't? Thank you. Because normally I have my printed copy, but... I don't know. Thank you so much. All right. Hello, hello, everyone, it's Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-five, but we'll call the City Council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance given by Dan Sander?
Most gracious God, we thank you for this, this night. We just wanted to keep going here and get this meeting going and smooth tonight. We pray for our council members here, the mayor, and, and we just wanted to get this thing done tonight if we can. We love you, and we care about you, and we do as much as we can, in Jesus' name and prayer, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. First off, we have a proclamation. Would anyone on council like to read it?
I'd do it.
All right, I'll mean, thank you.
All right.
The Florida just, people who die and things like that, couldn't we stand up and run and have what policemen are here come forward? Rather than just sitting here.
I'm fine with that. Mr. Baker, would you mind reading it at the podium where we stand next to it?
That's fine.
All right.
Need to see that paper copy, though. Okay, thank you. All right, this is a proclamation to recognize National Police Week, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas there are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the East Point Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the wall of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas three hundred forty-five new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including a hundred and forty-eight officers who died in the line of duty in two thousand twenty-four and one hundred ninety-seven from previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-seventh Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May eleventh through May seventeenth. Whereas Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, is designated as Peace Office Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the East Point City Council declares the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth as National Police Week in the city of East Point, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Proclaim this the sixth day, May, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Councilman Baker, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilman Brashadlik?
Here.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Submoved.
Support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Brashadlik?
Yes.
Thank you. The hearing of the public is open, and we're gonna start. Some people might remember, we tried to make accommodations for someone who had a disability last week. It didn't work out. So they eventually decided to, or requested to submit a comment and have it read. So Ms. Homan, do you have that prepared?
I do, Mayor.
Please.
Good evening. If the City Council is amending the city charter, in part, to remove the gender-specific pronoun for the city manager position, then the City Council should do a comprehensive amendment to the entire city charter and remove all the gender-specific pronouns for all the other positions. It seems silly to make this change for one position, but not, but not all the other positions.
Thank you. And what was the name of the person who submitted that?
Thank you, Charles Blackwell.
Thank you. All right, and now on to the rest of the hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. First thing, I had a question last meeting about the sanitary sewer being moved over by sheets. And I know, Mr. Kern, you weren't here. I don't know if you can address that. I just wondered if there was any issue moving it from the front of the property closer to the residents' backyards, if you saw any potential problems with that. So if you're able to address that later. I was at the Neighborhood Watch meeting last month, and there was a representative from Cerisa who handles the emergency calls for East Point, Roseville, St. Clair Shores, and Fraser. He had a presentation and gave us a bunch of statistics. For the year two thousand twenty-four, police calls that they've received, East Point police calls were twenty-five thousand nine thirteen. And to compare that to St. Clair Shores, their police calls were twenty-five thousand seven ninety-six. So a little more than a hundred less than what we have here in East Point. East Point is a city of five point two square miles with thirty-four thousand people, whereas St. Clair Shores is eleven point six square miles, counting just the land only, not counting water, with fifty-eight thousand eight seventy-four people. St. Clair Shores has twice the area and seventy percent more residents than East Point, but East Point had more than a hundred more police calls last year. I just point that out because East Point keeps our police force very busy here. Our police chief and Judge Galen have discussed over the last few meetings their needs for the new police station and courthouse. They require ample parking, because we are such a busy city. Judge Galen has mentioned she would like a second courtroom. Chief Haynes has stressed the importance of an onsite gun range. This would actually allow other cities that don't have one to come over and use ours. I feel that, being that we are such a busy city here, and being that we are honoring the police force this week, and I know we are gonna be discussing the police station and courthouse today, again, I am hoping that we try and accommodate whatever it is that they're asking for. And I do feel that, because it is such a busy, busy area, that things like parking and parking spaces are very important, because there are a lot of people that use the police station and courthouse. So that's my thoughts on that, and hopefully you'll be able to figure out something quickly so we can move forward with the new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Patricia Brewer, and I am an East Point resident as well. I sent a letter, email to Ms. Doom regarding the entrance. I enter from Brock onto Eight Mile, and there is a parking space there that I am very, very concerned with in front of one of the businesses, because you cannot see the oncoming traffic that is traveling west on Eight Mile. And I think that this is a very, very serious condition, situation, rather, and I'm very concerned, because there have been some near misses there, because you can't see the oncoming cars, because sometimes there are large trucks that are parked in that space. This space is running east and west. It is not a north and south space. It's running east and west, and in most cases, there is a large truck that's parked there. I know that, because I live in that area, and I am traveling on Brock onto Eight Mile, and I cannot see past that truck. So I appreciate Ms. Doom's response. However, I was wondering what happened with the code enforcement situation that the gentleman was supposed to come and check on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, please.
Okay. Karen Morate, an East Point resident. The war on wildlife in Michigan has to stop. And, you know, it's ranging from gassing the geese, which is absolutely beyond unconscionable. Anytime there's an overpopulation with animals, look no further than humans who've created this mess. Over the last, what, three, four, five decades or so, you know, people are just moving out further and further north to what was rural areas, and now it's cookie cutter subdivisions. And people will complain about the increase in deer to auto collisions. They whine about the deer eating their plants, so on and so forth. Well, you destroyed their natural habitat, so that's why you're seeing more wildlife around. You literally destroyed their homes, and they need to eat. They don't have the luxury of going into the grocery stores like the rest of us and pick out our food and go home and prepare it. And the DNR is absolutely no friend to the wildlife at all. They have constantly lied to several municipalities and the public at large in these so-called management methods, which is always involving lethal measures. Gassing the geese, killing the deer with sharpshooters or bow and arrows. They will not even accept that it's cost-effective and it also works extremely well. That's birth control. When I was in law school, I incorporated that into my animal law research paper. The United States of the Humane Society had addressed the issue in Fripp Island, South Carolina, and it worked extremely well. Currently, what's going on is Pete Lucido and the DNR are waging war against Kelly Labonte with the Detroit Animal Welfare Group.
You have thirty seconds.
They've been, you know, rehabilitating injured wildlife. In my opinion, Lucido should get his bar license immediately revoked, because he's filed bogus charges against her, accusing her of habituating deer, the deer weren't even on her property. Now the DNR is trying to go after revoking her license and permit. We need people, May sixteen, at forty-two dash one District Court, Romeo, Michigan, to protest against this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor, I would move to accept the minutes of the special meeting held on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, item B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we approve the regular meeting minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Brashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, we have no scheduled hearings. We'll move on to unfinished business. Item A, discussion impossible motion on police department court building. Mr. Kern, did you have any comments that you wanted to make on this opening?
Yeah, I was just gonna, thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to give a timeline as far as finishing up the design and construction on the project. If we're to move forward with the final detailed design here tonight, it would take up to a year to complete that design and get that project out to bids. You're looking at the summer of next year for taking bids. Starting construction roughly September of next year. It would take about a year and a half is what we're estimating to build the facilities. You're looking at early to mid two thousand twenty-eight for a final completion of the building. That's as of starting the final design. If we were to move forward today and starting the final design, that's what we're looking at. Part of, you know, up to a year with the final design, part of that is getting permits. Obviously, we have to get building permits. There's also site work involved with the project, so we need to get water and sanitary sewer permits. Water permits through Eagle right now are taking anywhere from four to six months just to get reviewed and approved. So that, that's one, that's one item that's gonna hang things up for a little bit potentially, but that, you know, we would get that, try to get that portion of the project design right away and get that out for permits as soon as we can. But that, basically, that's the timeline right now that we're looking at in order to complete the project.
And I had not asked you this in advance, so I don't know if you know the answer. The two different grants, the seven million and the one million, are you aware of restrictions on the timeline for that use? I, I reached out to Senator Kleinfeld's office. I, I think some of their staff members, they're trying to get me the rules or exact answer, but...
I don't offhand, I don't know what the deadline is on the, on the earmark on that. I wanna, I know the other state earmark we received, the deadline is twenty, in two thousand twenty-nine to complete the project. I'm not sure if it's the same deadline or not for this one, but other than that, I don't, there's no other restrictions that I'm aware of. Throughout, you know, as far as the design has to be complete by a certain date or anything, there's just a final completion date, as far as I know.
Okay, that's what they indicated to me, that typically it's four years. And they were checking on that, just to make sure it was accurate. Does anyone on council have any comments?
Did we have any updates on parking, about other options on parking? We talked about that last, last meeting.
I know at the last meeting, we talked about potential for a parking structure. We did look into that some more, as far as the cost to do a parking structure, based upon structures that we've worked on in the past. You're looking at about forty thousand dollars per parking space. So for the number of parking spaces that are needed for this project, you're looking at an additional four to five million dollars in order to do a parking structure on that site. I mean, there's other, we could look at other alternatives on how to lay out the parking during the design. We've got time to do that, but as far as the parking structure option, that, that would be the cost, the additional cost of the project, if you were to look at a parking, parking structure.
Is this considering different options, like, because we've talked about, like, a little bit of parking, like, underneath, you know, the building, or just like, not like a full structure, but more like, you know, just maybe a second story kind of thing? Like, I feel like there's, you know, multiple different options, and they wouldn't, I'd assume they wouldn't all cost the same amount of money.
Yeah, obviously, a smaller structure is gonna cost less. I mean, there's still be, there would be a significant increase in cost to do any underground parking as well underneath the building. But, I mean, again, we can look at, we can look at different options as we're moving through the final design process, too, and try to come up with the most cost-effective way to provide parking.
Yeah, council, I just ask, because I think kind of like a, a street, parking lot right on the street kind of kills the vibe of a downtown area, and we'd just be adding a, you know, parking lot right at the street, right in the middle of our downtown that we're trying to enhance, and, you know, have a farmer's market, whole plan going on by the library. It's generally, you know, parking lots are not good for a downtown area. Like that, people kind of, you know, stop walking, that kind of thing, and doesn't really help out. So that's why I was asking about that.
Any other comments from council? I, I'll, I'll say where I was, kind of was on this. Well, I'll respond to the parking thing first. I'm not sure there's much we can do at this point, just because the way we set it up is so that we can demolish the other building. If, if that other building wasn't there, life would be easier. But in terms of going forward with the total approval today, I think by, the one thing I'm still a little bit hung up on is the cost in comparison with having our own gun range, and it's just a hefty price tag. And I don't know that it needs to be rolled in right now. I, I think if we, if we can find some funding for that, I don't know if I want to pull the trigger just yet.
I'll say with the firing range, with that being a separate...
Why is that funny? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't even realize, go on.
With the firing range, with that being a separate building, a much smaller building, obviously, we still have some time. You know, as far as considering the firing range, if we want to do a separate firing range building or not, there's some time. I think that the, the police and court building itself, that, that's, that's the critical part. That's gonna take the, you know, the, up to a year possibly to design. That, you know, we want to get moving on the design of the building as soon as we can, but the firing range definitely isn't gonna take near as much time to design. I think we still have some time to still kind of consider that, whether that, we want to move forward with that or not. And that could come front of council at another time.
Related to that, I think it was like nine hundred thousand for the equipment for that. What does that kind of cover, if you know?
You might have a better idea on that.
I have no idea. I, I think nine hundred thousand is a, I mean, again, I don't know. I think it's probably a very conservative estimate. I know that in the pharmacy that I worked for, when we gutted our gun range and rebuilt the entire inside of it, now that didn't include putting a new ventilation system in, like this would require, but that was less than a quarter million to redo the whole range with armor plate and everything else that was required. So I don't know what all went into that number to get to nine hundred thousand. I'm just not, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be more, I guess our architecture staff would have a better idea on what that, what that entails. But I would agree, that's on the conservative end, for sure.
Okay.
Wait, are we saying conserva, because you said a quarter million? Is that what you said? Sure, or chief?
It was, it was about two hundred and twenty-three thousand to completely refurbish our gun range, but again, that didn't include the exterior building and didn't include the, the ventilation system. So I, I don't know. Like I said, I think the way that they did, at least the way it was explained to me, it was just on a cost-per-square-foot basis estimate. I do know that I, I did do a, a report and researched it the best I could, and it would be approximately, I don't remember the exact number, it was right around ninety-seven thousand dollars a year that would cost us if we didn't have a gun range to go elsewhere and to pay the overtime, in the, in the backfill overtime, to do that. So looking at that, roughly sixteen point five years, if we didn't have any other agencies participate, we would be at a cost zero, or a net zero, we'd be paid up and moving forward with a gun range. Because the hopes would be that it would last at least twenty-five to thirty years without having to be refurbished at that point, so...
Well, I was just asking, because do we mean conservative by it's going to at most be nine hundred or at least be nine hundred thousand? I think I was confused just now on that.
As far as I thought, I think nine hundred thousand would be on the high end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, we had looked at refurbishing our current gun range about ten years ago. At that time, the estimate was between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand, and four hundred to five hundred thousand of that price was just the ventilation. With the lead requirements and the, the amount they have to filter out, that was the bulk of the renovation at that time. So your quarter million with no ventilation makes sense, but, you know, that's probably the bulk of that nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm kind of with you on this. One point seven million's a huge cost, and, and I don't know if, you know, I think other departments obviously already have places where they go. I don't know if it's, you know, Macomb Community College, or they have their own. But I was starting to, you know, look at nearby cities. If they have their own, I would assume they'd continue to use that instead of, you know, traveling. So I think if, if we were to go forward with this, I think we'd minimally, for, for me to want to go forward with it, we'd need other, you know, memos of understanding or something that other departments would use it. Otherwise, I think it is way too expensive, even just with the number you threw out here. You know, it'd take seventeen years or whatever, at least two. And that's not any maintenance costs for us, just to break even, so, yeah.
I mean, even in the event if we did a little more research and decided, it seems to me like that building, it wouldn't take as long to get approvals for. So that specific part, I think I'm less concerned about being, having a strict timeline.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts?
I have just one real quick. I noticed in, that there was, the animal control was still...
still included in the estimated costs. I think we had discussed previously that we were not going to put that there. Is that still accurate?
Yes. I mean, that, I think that was kind of council's direction.
Okay. But I, I just, I had seen it in here, and that was the only thing that kind of stuck out.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, we still included all of the estimates. All the estimates that we've discussed to date have been included in the packet. But yeah, I think the consensus is that the animal control building would not be built there.
I think though, councilman, I think, do we need to figure out though, a permanent solution? Because I thought that the DPW is supposed to be, you know, not permanent. I don't know what we're, we're doing then, if that's the case, right? Wasn't it meant to be like transitional?
Oh, I, I agree. I, I, I think perhaps it can't be, or isn't the best location to put it at. I, regardless of what we do with this building, I think, I think we do have to have a discussion on building a permanent animal control facility that is not located at DPW.
Yeah, I guess for me, one thing about the parking, I think, kind of like you said, mayor is, I don't, I don't know that we have a lot of options, because building the structure will raise the cost like significantly. But one thing to consider is that when there, if we do move forward with the farmer's market, or, you know, those, those events kind of in that central area, the parking lot will provide public parking for the people who choose to come out and support those events, or those farmer's market and those things of that nature. So I think I'm kind of, I, I understand Councilman DeMonico's thought about it, but I think for the sake of moving forward, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, like, still, you know, being as it's, as it is right now. I know Mr. Kern was saying that we could possibly think about how we design it, or a layout or something moving forward. But I think that is one factor. And I think that's one plus at least, is that you have public parking. As far as the gun range, I guess, it sounds like we still have a little time to kind of mull it over. Thus, the one thing for me is that I would, as long as they don't have to go, like it was mentioned, go to a local gun range, I wouldn't be in favor of that just for safety reasons. I did go over and talk with police to kind of get a little more understanding of, you know, kind of how they felt about that. And as was mentioned, they use, you know, certain equipment that they wouldn't want to transport back and forth. And I think it creates a vulnerability to our officers and potentially to our community, depending on, you know, if something were to happen. But for me, that's pretty much my thoughts about it.
I agree on the parking, by the way. I think if we could build a structure and it wasn't that expensive, that's what I would prefer, so. All right. Well, my position is I'm prepared to vote to go forward with plans for the court and bill, the court and police building, excluding the gun range for now, and obviously no animal control. How does the rest of council feel?
I'm, I'm in, I'm fine with that.
I do want to also ask administration though, just on the side, to maybe get us the information on when we have to apply for the funds. My understanding is they typically give, the state will give us half upfront and then the other half when the project's completed. So I, I just want to, it'll, I'll be more comfortable if I know what the timeline is and that we're, we're on track. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I thought that was your motion. I would support.
I can't hear.
Oh, sorry, not, not right now. I'm sorry. That was, was part of the motion. And yes, that'll be my motion. So, a second. All right. Other, go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick comment. Yeah, I guess, I, I just, I think we really should consider other options about how the parking's set up. And just, you know, we've had entire plans, you know, master plan, nine mile plan, all that. And we're going to basically, with how this is set up, build something that doesn't, is not consistent with those plans, with the parking being out at the street like that. I just was hoping we could consider options more than just, you know, we've got a very general, you know, amount of money maybe it would cost. But, yeah, that is my opinion.
Well, how solidified are we in, like, if we wanted to adjust placement or parking?
And we could look at that. We'll look at other, we could look at other alternatives for the parking and see what would be best.
Because I think right now, what you need is the approval to get the contractors on board to start lining everything up right.
That's, yeah, we basically want to get the plans going so that we can get that out to bid on the timeline that I mentioned earlier. But, you know, we've got, on the site plan, we've got some time too. But the building, the building is the critical part to get, that's going to take the longest to design.
Yeah, how do we bid this out though, if we don't know kind of how everything is set up on the, you know, plot of land? I guess, it seems like that's complicated. It seems like we kind of got to have those designs done first before we could...
Yeah, those, yeah, those designs would be done. We, I mean, it's going to be bid out as one project. So, I mean, we would have everything designed before it's bid. But, you know, the building's going to take the longest amount of time to design. While we're in the middle of designing the building, we'll look at the alternatives for parking and the site plan, and we'll come back to you on that, and then incorporate that into the design as we're continuing with the building itself.
So, I mean, what exactly should, should the motion be, just moving forward with finalizing the plans?
I think exactly what you had said earlier, basically, to, yeah, proceed with, yeah, completion of the design plans with excluding the animal control and, I guess, considering the fire, considering the fire, firing range at a, at a different time, for now leaving that out of the design.
I'm okay with that. I guess I would trust administration to perhaps have, you know, subsequent meetings as that process is going forward and before, certainly before we put anything out to bid.
Yeah, we, I guess, yeah, we would probably, at least monthly, I would say, we would probably meet with administration and go over the status of where the design is. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, yeah, council approval before it's bid out. Yeah, going, yeah, I would come in front of council before it's actually put out to bid too.
All right. I don't have any other questions, council?
Yeah, because I guess all, all we've agreed to at this point, right, was a couple years ago, we agreed to do a programming and needs assessment, conceptual design and opinion of probable cost. That's all we've, yeah, approved at the table basically at, at this point. Yeah.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
All right, moving on to approval of resolution number 25-2002, charter amendment. I guess, Councilman DeMonico, did you want to open up on this? I think you requested, but...
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we tabled this for you, Councilman Curly. If you had any input on it, since you weren't at the last meeting, we'd rather, you know, go forward or vote on it with the full council. So I guess, maybe first though, kind of on the discussion that we talked about last time, and actually, Mr. Blackwell touched on it with his public comment, I think we could make it simpler. And let me pull this up in front of me here. We could make it simpler than it is right now in the resolution. And I think it doesn't change the, what I'm about to say doesn't change like the meaning or anything, because the, as was mentioned, the, the gender pronouns doesn't change anything. It says he right now. And obviously, we've had female city managers, so that's essentially, you know, moot. And we would only be changing it for that paragraph and not for the full charter. But it's my understanding, you need a full charter commission to be able to change across the entire charter that. So we can't do that anyway with this. And then also, the residency requirement's invalid due to state law, where right now it says that the manager has to live in East Point. So essentially, that being in there or not being in there means the same thing. So if we clear that up, we could just make the question on the ballot simpler, and then the change would just be, just the part about two years of municipal management. And I guess to make that even simpler, I can pull up my notes here. Yeah, so the section 18 would read, "The manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the city." Then we're keeping the he here. "He shall be chosen by the council solely on the basis of his executive and administrative qualifications." That's the same as is, "The manager shall have had at least two years of experience in municipal management." That's the part that's changed. "And shall during his term of office reside in the city of East Point, provided however he shall be a citizen of the United States of America. The manager shall file a bond satisfactory to the council." All that rest of it then would be the same. And then I think we could simplify that ballot question to be, "Shall the charter of the city of East Point, Chapter 3, Section 18, be amended to establish a requirement that the city manager have at least two years of experience in municipal management, and further eliminate the requirement, providing the manager shall have had at least one year experience as a manager or assistant manager in some city or village?" So again, I think, said a lot, but I think that's basically the exact same thing we kind of, like, were talking about last meeting. Just makes it simpler, so there's not all of that additional language change that just makes the, you know, ballot question more complicated than it needs to be. Yes, the city manager.
I'd like to just add one thing. The last sentence, "The manager shall find, shall file a bond satisfactory to the council." Traditionally, the community files that bond, not the manager. So I would suggest that either eliminate that sentence, or something in the line that a manager shall, and our attorney could help me here, be able to be bonded. You know, typically, when I sign a contract, it's like, you know, are you able to be properly bonded? If the answer's no, then we don't hire a person. So it's just, I, that's rather old language, where managers don't provide their own bond.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, I was going to bring up, the bonding is through MMRMA. It covers all employees, the city manager, court employees, court administrators. Everybody's covered under that policy. So that is, she's right, it's old language that is irrelevant today.
Mayor, given what Ms. Doom and Mr. Altblum have said, it may, it may be just better just to eliminate that language in that sentence altogether. If it's already being done as a matter of course, through the MMRMA, then I don't know if it's even necessary to have that charter language in there.
Is, I guess my question would be, is that language even enforceable? Or, because we're not following it anyway, is it preempted by state law? Are we allowed to have that enforced?
Same thing as the other
Yeah.
things we're talking about? Guess so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure if there's anything actually on point requiring that language to be in there. But the fact that the city does that as a matter of having insurance, I just don't know if it's even necessary. And if, for some reason, it turned out that there was some type of requirement, we can always add that to our ordinances as opposed to an actual requirement in the charter.
So the city attorney and our treasurer are both recommending that the manager shall file a bond satisfactory to the council should be eliminated. So, so why don't we just do that?
Well, I guess my question was, is it, is it even enforceable as part of the charter?
Well, if it's not enforceable, why, why do we have it in there? If, if we're getting two recommendations from two professionals, why, why don't we just eliminate it and not worry about if it's going to be enforced or not?
Well, I, I think, with my understanding of Mr. DeMonico's comments, the whole purpose of the change being proposed is, is really regarding the limitations on our search. Just because it's, there's other things near it that need be changed. I mean, we're kind of getting in the weeds. I do think it, it's kind of throwing, we're getting into the point where we're just realizing, because it's in that section, there's a lot of things that should be changed. But, I mean, the whole charter's like that. So, I think the purpose of the change was to address the required experience. So I think we're going outside of that.
So do I hear you saying you don't want to eliminate that sentence?
Not as part, personally, not as part of this charter amendment. I think it's straightforward. I don't disagree with it. But sort of like correcting pronouns or something like that, I, I don't think now's the time to do it. I think that would require an entire rewrite of the charter.
Why would require an entire rewrite if you eliminate that one sentence? We're already eliminating one. There's a lot of things that are crossed off in here.
I need to address those kinds of issues. I mean, that's, that's like a, a thing you would do if you were rewriting the charter with a charter commission. Correcting it in one sentence, in one area of the charter, through a single amendment, put to the people seems, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, it makes sense to me. So, oh, by the way, thank you, Councilman DeMonico. I, I got a chance to speak of, because I wasn't here the last meeting. So I do have another, that was one of my questions. The other question I'll, I'll present to you. I'm gonna, I, I, we agree to disagree. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see where it flies. I would move that we eliminate the sentence, "The manager shall file a bond satisfactory to the council."
Is there support?
Okay. So, moving on, and we had down there two years of experience in multiple management. I'm a little concerned about that, because it really doesn't give you a lot of, a lot of applicants that have a lot of experience. So I'm wondering why we couldn't make that four years instead of two years. So I guess, I don't know how many of you put the, I don't even know who wrote this thing to begin with. So I don't know why they put two years in here. So if one of you could explain to me, first of all, before I make a motion, why you want two years and not something else?
Sure. Yeah, Councilman Curly, yeah, I proposed this change. I went to two, because right now it's one. So it's already doubling it. I felt, you know, that's, again, like this, this was meant to expand the pool. The council's always going to have to, you know, determine if the person's a good fit. You could always have someone with, you know, four years' experience and someone with two years' experience. And the two years' experience would be a better fit for the community, you know, or it can be vice versa or whatever. So I think just, the reason was just to not arbitrarily, at least with this change, like, remove like township management folks, you know, or like county management. We want to make the search as wide as possible, and then, you know, start to do the usual thing where, you know, pick finalists, interview them here like we, like we normally would. But this way, it does increase it a little bit from one to two years. And then it expands, though, the pool at that point to be municipal management, instead of only manager or assistant managers in cities or villages.
So you're saying that the pool would be larger if we kept it two years instead of making it four years?
Sure, yeah.
And also, also, it would be larger because it's changing. The proposed change takes away the requirement that you have, that you had to have served as either a manager or a city manager in some city or village. It now says municipal management. So that, that, it takes away from the experience in the position versus someone who served as some sort of management experience anywhere in the municipality.
Okay. Mayor, I, I'm not going to make the motions, because I, I don't like to hear no's. no's. So, but, let's all keep in mind that this will be on the ballot in November, and praise God, if we get all the paperwork ready and we are able to get some applicants in here to be the city manager, I'm looking at probably August or at the latest September. I would hope none of us sitting here think that we're going to put this on the ballot in November and we're going to postpone looking for a city manager between now and November. So we get somebody, say August, September, I hope they're here like six or eight years. So six or eight years from this, whenever we hire them, this will actually come, would be relevant. So eight years from now, I doubt if any of us will, well, I shouldn't talk about you guys, I know I won't be, but you never know. Mr. Mayor, I, I stand defeated. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, and I would just say, I had a little bit of a back and forth with this too because I, I wasn't quite comfortable with just changing it to experience in municipal But there is some, I do agree that there is some things that should change, but that one I just wasn't comfortable with a hundred percent, but it is what it is.
Mr. Mayor, if you could indulge me and folks watching on television and are here, would somebody read exactly what it will say on the ballot?
Well, I think we haven't gotten to a motion yet, but Councilman McShadlock.
I had just a couple of things. I think I, hearing from Charles Blackwell about the comments that he was making, it's almost as if, I'm worried that the public is going to have a misunderstanding about what it is that we're trying to do. They, I think the perception may be for some people that we're trying to do it gender neutral and trying to be that, you know, make that the focus, and that's not what we're doing on this particular amendment. So I'm wondering if we want to just make the language, so in the second sentence, instead of he, they, or any of that, just put, "The potential, the candidate or the potential manager shall be chosen by the council solely on the basis of, eliminate the his, their executive and administrative qualifications. The manager shall have had at least two years of experience in municipal management." What if we kept it, kind of kept it simple? Would that?
Can I respond to that, Councilor?
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying it might, because I don't want the confusion out there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I discussed, yeah, probably a pretty lengthy discussion with our city attorney on this. I think the, basically the only reason probably not to do that also is then we have to mention that in the question too still, to some degree, that you'd be like removing or like changing that wording, regardless of if, I guess, you know, we changed he to they or.
We just don't make the word he and put the potential manager or the candidate or, do you know what I'm saying? That would still be neutral without that confusion.
Yeah, I think if, I'm not, we'd have to like mention it in some form in the, the question then, so we'd have to still, so then I guess we're, you know, making the, the ballot question longer again still. There's not really a lot of, a good, I don't think a lot of good solutions for, for doing this. I guess that's why we have charter commissions versus charter, charter amendments, I guess, but at least that, that'd be the reason why I think we just leave it, because then there's no focus on anything but the main part, like you're saying that we want to, to change that.
Of course, keep in mind, folks, and maybe this will happen, maybe it won't, somebody that you, you guys would like, probably would be terrific, and he or she reads, "The manager shall file a bond satisfactory to the council," and they will say, "What the hell is that? I'm not, I'm not going to mess with them. They don't know what they're, they don't know what they're talking about."
I don't know.
So be careful what you put in here.
No, no.
Wait a minute, we already voted on it. I'm just saying, the more stuff you leave in there that's not germane to what we're really talking about, it's not going to work.
I mean, people are bonded for a notary. You have to be bonded for a notary, so, I mean, you know, sometimes that is in a job position, just saying.
So I, I'm not really concerned about, or at least personally, I want to focus on the purpose of why that was put forward, which was how it affects the city manager search. I agree with just leaving, just leaving the pronouns as they are. They're not really legally significant, and it does confuse the question, and I think that the question that should be put forward to the voters should just be very straightforward of what it's actually doing and accomplishing. I don't want to make it too complicated, but I would, I would propose rearranging the question a little bit. So if we, if we take out that change and the residency requirement, there's some that has to be removed anyway, I would suggest wording, how I would word it would be, "Shall the charter of the city of East Point, Chapter Three, Section Eighteen be amended to eliminate the requirement providing the manager shall have one, at least one year experience as a manager or assistant city manager in some city or village, and establish a requirement that the city manager have two years' experience in municipal management." I think it's just, it's kind of written that way, but flipping it, because what we're doing is eliminating this requirement and replacing it with this one, and so I think it should read like that so it's easily understood.
Okay. I would support that motion, and then I think, I think we should just do a motion where we say we approve the resolution, but with that change, Mr. Mayor, that you just stated, but also then we should just read out the change that the actual charter clause would say.
Okay, I'll, actually, let me just do it in, I guess, one swoop now, I think I can do this. I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the only, keeping only the changes that strike the language, "One year experience as a manager or assistant manager in some city or village," includes the new language, "Two years of experience in municipal management," and leaving out all the other edits, and that the question shall be worded as, "Shall the city charter of the city of East Point, Chapter Three, Section Eighteen be amended to eliminate the requirement providing the manager shall have at least one year experience as a manager or assistant manager in some city or village, and establish a requirement that the city manager have at least two years' experience in municipal management?"
I'll second that.
So I just wanted to read it all so it's clear.
I'll go back and look at the record.
Okay.
Oh, maybe I can call you to find out what it says. I'll call you tomorrow and you can read it to me, since nobody else will.
Yes, I'll be available in the afternoon. I have court in the morning.
All right, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
All right, move on to reports from administrations. City managers report, Ms. Doom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just share with you that the Grashit Water Main Project is complete. It's been a long time coming, but it has been completed. We're now, and Ryan, help me a little bit, they're doing the connections along Grashit.
Yes, all, yeah, all the pipe is in on both sides of Grashit now, and they're working on the connections. We've got the southbound side is just about done. Northbound side, we've just started doing the connections to the side streets here last week, so they'll be working on that here for the next couple of weeks, along with water service transfers. And then we'll be coming in to do the sidewalk restoration, the vegetative restoration, so it's moving along very quickly. And then in addition to that, we've got some side streets that we're working on too. Chestnut and Crescent Wood just east of Grashit is wrapped up. We got the restoration done there recently. Hayes, south of Nine Mile, they just wrapped up the water service transfers. That water main is now in service, and they'll be doing, or they have started doing some concrete prep work there. Lincoln, the water main is complete there. We're working on service transfers currently. We've got one block of Manchester that we still have to do, east of Grashit. They'll probably be starting that here in the next week or two, so they've moved along a lot faster than we anticipated, so that's good.
Thank you, Ryan. I'd also like to share that the Showmobile is in the shop. It's getting prepped up and ready for the Memorial Day events. And also, for those of you who've been paying attention and watching what's happening in our community, there is a, CHN is a company, they're going to install the second housing unit at Kelly and Topher. These are pre-built, prefab, and they're going to be stacking them, one on top of another. They've done one already, and now they're going to do the other one. They're hoping to have it by tomorrow, weather permitting. We were able to peek in the windows, we went over there with the guys who were working, and we didn't want to get in their way, so it's very interesting to see this complete with, these, these properties complete with drywall and cabinets and fixtures and all put into place and stacked like Lego blocks. I know that's rather unique for our area, it's something new. It's also something that I experienced working in another community out of state, where a local hotel, a little old motel, the type you drive up to the door, the 1950s type, burned to the ground, and they rebuilt with a three-story hotel. All of that trucked in, all of it ready and prepped, complete with bedspreads, lamps and whatnot, sheets made up and everything, and stacked them like blocks and secured them, and had a hotel ready-made in just a very short order. So it's really interesting to see, you know, how this is working around the country and other states, so it's been fascinating. We hope to get over there tomorrow, and if you'd like to see how they stack these, and you'd never know that they're prefab, that they are, just look like regular homes, they've got siding, they're just very nicely put together. They're going to be quite an asset, and it's a bit of a test plan to see how, how well people receive these properties, and they are income, I wouldn't say income adjusted, but they're definitely reasonably priced rentals for the area, so folks who are a little bit more of a limited income will be able to afford those apartments. And they are a combination of one and two bedrooms. Kim, I know you're around the corner. Yoohoo, there you are. I don't believe any of them were three bedrooms, were they? They were one and two bedrooms? Okay, yeah. So if you have some time tomorrow, come on down to Kelly and Topher and watch them assemble this second building, it's very interesting to watch. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, we'll move on to Finance Director's Report. Mr. Blum.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The, if you recall, we received a, actually two separate pension grants totaling about 6.2 million. Part of accepting those is a requirement to report to the state for five years. The first of five was submitted last week. It's a small price to pay for 6.2 million. We got a request today from Lake Orion, they're, I guess lobbying the state, but they were focused on the reduction in cable fee, franchise fees, and they were requesting from different communities. Interesting, they had a list of where they had, and the communities ranged from a 1% reduction to a 56% reduction compared 2019 to 2024. For East Point, we had a 34% decline from 475,000 to 313,000. I think they're trying to get franchise fees on streaming services and try to recoup some of this lost money. As a consumer, I don't like it, as a finance director, okay, so, just a heads up.
Mr. Blum, was this the, this is like a fee per, like cable?
Right, there's a 5% franchise fee on every cable bill, and that comes to us on a quarterly basis.
So, yeah, some communities have much more people cutting, cutting the cable than others than.
But, yeah, 34% is a pretty big drop, so.
Yeah, okay.
And, and topic has come up very recently, and this is not for any decision, but to think about for the next week as we roll into budget. The dog park over at Memorial, it has a fob system, it has a video set up. They rare charge us some fees for people to get a fob to fob in and out, well, just in, and they, they do occasionally send us some of that money. But we pay all the internet, we pay the, the video cost, we pay for all the fobs and everything. The, there was a power surge that knocked the system out. They have not been able to get it up and running, and the, the cost of replace what's there is over $3,000. They offered up a cloud solution that would be like $1,500, but $180 maintenance fee every year. Just something to consider of whether you want a public park having a, almost a private club set up, or do we just kill all of this and make it an open dog park? But again, not tonight, just something to think about, we're not approving any expenditures at this point, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Moving on to our city attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Over the next couple of meetings, I'm going to be bringing forth some ordinance amendments that have been requested by both the police department and the city's animal control officer, Ashley Sanchez, and so, I'm not going to bring them all at one meeting, but just, I'd like to spread it out over the course of the next couple of meetings. And I'd also like to touch on something that Ms. Nicholas said, she was making comparisons to both St. Clair Shores and the city of East Point. By comparison, on a typical Wednesday morning over in the 40th District Court, there'll be maybe ten or five defense attorneys handling cases over there. I'm over in the 38th District Court here in East Point every Friday morning, and last Friday, for instance, I had 24 defense attorneys there, and a lot of those attorneys had multiple cases. So you have the 24 attorneys there with multiple clients, and in addition to all of the individuals that are there that are unrepresented. So this new courthouse is going to be very, very well-received once it's up and running. So that being said, Mayor, Council's also on receipt of our monthly status report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, Item A approval of award of contract for Kennedy Park Pavilion roof replacement. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Maybe I had a quick question. Did, was, did anyone have a strong preference? I see we had an option for a metal roof as opposed to regular shingles. I don't know if Mr. Kern, if you had any comments on, on that even, but I saw that we're suggesting we do shingles, and with my research, it kind of, I don't know, it feels like it kind of didn't make it too big of a difference one way or the other, but I don't know if anybody else had any other suggestion.
Yeah, we, yeah, we had that alternate in there for a metal roof. Roughly it was $12,000, $12,487 for the shingled roof versus $33,000 and some change for the metal roof. We did, we did talk to the DPW about that, and the feeling was that the DPW thought that the shingled roof would be the way to go, just based upon the difference in cost.
Okay, because I think, is it the, the north, the North Gazebo at Kennedy does, has a metal roof, and then the, the two big ones on the southern part are regular shingles, I think, right?
Yeah, the north one does have a metal roof, I'm pretty sure. The other ones at the south end are shingled, for sure, I know that, yes.
Okay. I guess that's fine, go with what's suggested, I just didn't know if anyone else had any thoughts on that.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we award the contract of the replacement of the pavilion roof in Kennedy Park to Weatherseal Home Improvement Company Incorporated, located at 51662 Oral Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan 48315, in the amount of $12,584, and further authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second that.
All right, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item B, approval of purchase of 80 new computers and licenses for, for those computers. Would anyone like to open up with any comments or a motion? Or would administration be able to just, I guess? Or would administration be able to just, I guess, explain what we'd be buying or what we need?
Well, we have, whoops, sorry. I'm trying to be respectful and keep my microphone off when I'm not talking. So just as a quick background, this is in the 2425 budget year, which is about to end. Council had budgeted $100,000 for Phase One of the replacement of the computers. And so our IT services contractor obtained two quotes from CDW-G. It's a, it's a MI, Michigan deal, MI deal. That is through the state of Michigan. We get far better pricing than if we were to shop at a regular store. They definitely can buy in bulk and pass that savings on to us. So the, the request is to purchase 80 new Lenovo Think Center desktop computers for a total of $60,496. And then along with that, we also have to purchase 165 Microsoft licenses for a total of $37,212. That brings it in to about $97,708 and some change, which is below our budgeted amount. I understand that this is a two-year program to replace all of the computers throughout the entire organization. And unfortunately, as we know, and I'm sure Mr. D'Monico knows, about as soon as we buy these, they become outdated. There's so many changes in computers that, you know, they become obsolete very quickly. So we have older programs and older computers, and so we're just asking to purchase within the already budgeted amount.
Now, I was turning my mic off now, whoops. My laptop right here is from 2017, so it's going strong. And now that I say that, it's probably going to die on me, but.
It'll die tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, last meeting with your laptop. I guess I did have two just quick questions. I assume then, because I see that we're buying like half the computers now and all of the licenses now, I assume the other half of the licenses, when we buy the new computers, can be like just moved over?
I believe they can.
Okay, and then?
Kim, do you have some additional information?
That's correct. Okay, she said that's correct.
I can never find her. She's so far down there, I don't know if she disappeared on us or if she's still sitting there.
Yeah, maybe next time we build a council chamber, we should all be able to see each other. That'd be nice. And then my other quick question was just about, and I probably imagine, I know the answer to this, but it looks like we're paying for not a cloud license for Office, but just like an Office 2024 license. Is there a reason for that versus like just paying the, like Office 365?
I haven't had a long discussion with our IT person. I think there's concerns about on the cloud, especially with all of the kind of sensitive information we often have in our police and fire departments, and of course finances and whatnot. So I don't really know exactly why he's not in favor of going on the cloud. Kim, do you have any additional information? I know, bear with me, I haven't been here for three years, so I do have to lean a little bit heavily on some of the folks who have been here in my absence.
Actually, I guess I just thought the price, I mean, the price is pretty cheap, so I was assuming that just the cloud option would be more expensive, and it's just frankly cheaper, but I guess I'm not super familiar with how it works. I think I'm, I think it's fine. I just thought you might, you might know.
All right, any other questions? I will, if anyone wants to make a motion, I will.
Me, if you want to, I'll support your motion.
All right, sure. Motion to approve the purchase of 80 Lenovo Think Center desktop computers and 165 Microsoft 2024 licenses from CDW-G through MI deal contract 071B6600110 for a total cost of $97,708 and $45,000.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to, I see you changed your, uh, Medicare Advantage coverage. Mr. Blum, you should be willing to just kind of high level. I'm sorry. I apologize. I was asked to keep it off when I'm not speaking. Mr. Blum.
High level of what the changes are?
Yeah, just what it is.
First of all, if you recall, last year, we, or this current calendar year, we saw a significant increase in Medicare Advantage that was caused by the Inflation Reduction Act that limited retiree out-of-pocket to $2,000. Our previous coverage had $6,350 out-of-pocket on prescription drugs. So the retirees saved $4350, assuming they're a heavy drug user, and a lot of them are. So we went out and took a look to see if we could find something that would save the city some money without having a significant impact on the retirees. So the changes that are being proposed would take the annual deductible from $750 up to $1,000. It would leave the coinsurance percentage the same. It would leave the same maximum out-of-pocket the same. It would take an ER visit from $75 to $90, urgent care from 20 to 40, office visit from 20 to 30, and a specialist visit went from 20 to 35. After that, everything else was left the same. So relatively minor, you know, $250 extra on the deductible, and then a few, you know, $15 to $20 per office visit going up. That would save the city, where's my number? Yeah, you're somewhere.
$52,000.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. That would save the city about $52,000 on the retiree healthcare coverage. So it's just, if we're going to make a change, we need to let Blue Cross know in June, they do the Medicare Advantage in July and August, and get that set for January 1st effective
All right. Did anyone have any questions on that?
How do these changes work with, like, the collective bargaining agreements?
For retiree healthcare, they're, they're not in contract anymore because they're not an employee. There's been two different court rulings, one at the State Supreme Court and one at the U.S. Supreme Court, that basically, we're free to do what we want with retiree healthcare, including eliminating it if we chose, because they are now out of contract and they have no guarantee past the end of the contract.
So I was just kind of skimming one of them, and we still have a ton of verbiage in our contracts, so, yeah, that's what I was asking.
We're waiting for a few people to retire, and a lot of that language will go away.
I guess in terms of these changes, though, I feel like it was kind of like, well, when I was looking around, you know, it's, you'd mentioned that the prescription drugs goes from $3,800 to $2,000, but of course, every retiree is not using it all, or some are using none, that sort of thing. Looks like the number I found was like maybe it'd be an average savings of 400, like across the board. So it seems like we're kind of, we're like saving 400 bucks for potentially putting 400 bucks onto the retirees, kind of from just like a very high level, from what I was looking at, because if you hit that extra 250 in your deductible, which seems much more likely than the change in prescription drugs, I mean, I guess, I don't know if I have a hard stat on that either, but then plus, you know, the copays for urgent care, office visits, specialist visits, just a couple of those, and you basically add up to 400, so we could be saving 400 and costing them more than that. I was thinking, that's kind of what it looked like to me, obviously, then the city saves the $52,000 per year, but that's kind of what it looked like to me.
And we saw an increase of 141, so based on that, the retirees are still making out, because, you know, whatever we're paying, they're not, I guess is how I look at it.
All right. I mean, I guess how's council feeling on this? I was, my position was I supported the change. I don't want to make a motion if the rest of council feels.
I support it. I was, I was actually ready.
Oh, well, go ahead then.
What did you, what was the last thing you said, Councilmember Baker?
No, I said I supported, I was actually ready to make the, yeah, to make the motion.
What did you say?
I said.
You supported the motion?
I supported, and I was actually ready to make the motion. Yeah.
No, I didn't make a motion, so you can now.
Yeah. I move that we approve the change of the retiree medical, excuse me, Medicare Advantage, Division 604 healthcare coverage, effective January 1st, 2026, as presented.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Sad, I'm sorry, Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item D, approval of budget amendment, BA 25-05.
So moved.
All right, did, well, is there support?
Support.
And did anyone have any questions on this? All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item E, end of leased vehicle discussion. Did anyone want to, I guess, open up on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I guess we got two choices here to, as the memo states, that we can lease the vehicles or we can buy them. And there are six vehicles that will be building code rental vehicles, and then a vehicle from the DPW. So I guess I would ask Randy a couple of questions. On your, on your memo, you mentioned if we bought them outright, the DPW vehicle would be $6,599.23, and if we bought all six vehicles, it would be $35,810.78.
Correct.
Okay, so that comes to $42,409. And the memo states from Randy that he believes that the existing vehicles can function for another eight to 10 years, eight to 10 years spending $42,409. Now, the question I would ask you, if we didn't buy them and go out and lease them, right?
That would be our other option, correct?
The other option, can you give me an estimate what the total lease would be for seven vehicles?
Shoot. Rough, I mean, the current leases are approximately $465 each.
$465?
Yeah.
A month?
Per month, yeah. That includes maintenance. The new ones that we've seen coming in, we just got some Equinoxes for police and fire, they're running over $600 a month, just, you know, cost of vehicles have gone up. So that would be an idea of what the new one would cost. If we do buy them out, it's a 14-month payback as far as, you know, lease versus buy, and it's just a matter of, you know, do we want new vehicles and turn them over, or do we want to buy them out and drive them for a while, so.
Should I tell them what you wrote there about buy?
That's all right. We got some pretty ratty ones in DPW.
But he quoted somebody as saying they'll drive them into the ground. But it seems to me, councilmembers and mayor, that spending $42,409 would be an incredibly difference between just us buying them and eight to 10 years, that's what's convinced me, that they said they would last eight to 10 years. You lease them, it would cost, I don't know, I didn't, you said $465 a month. That, that's a lot of money with all the vehicles. I would hope that the council, after a discussion, would agree that we should go ahead and just buy the vehicles outright.
Yeah, Mr. Councilman Curley, I'm with you there, actually, and I'd, I'd like to motion that we, I'd motion with what you're saying, motion to direct administration to purchase leased vehicles at the end of the lease as discussed, but also I just would like to add, just for further clarification, as in the background brief here, that we, going forward, also continue to purchase vehicles for code enforcement. And once these leased vehicles, you know, were purchased and then they're end of life, as we've discussed before and voted a few years back, we should purchase then electric vehicles at that point for code enforcement. That'll be eight to 10 years from now, or something at least, I think they'll last at least 10 years, I'm guessing, with Mr. Blum saying, but that'd be my motion.
And that was why I left it open, in case you did want to go lease some EVs, so. But buying them out makes more financial sense.
Yes, I completely agree.
I have just one quick question.
Well, is there support? I guess the last step first. Okay, go ahead.
I just had a real quick question, and I think it might be with respect to the leases. I noticed that we were going through Enterprises, that because of like that MI deal situation, where we get a better deal through that rather than, say, going to a local place like Genesis Chevrolet here and going through like them. Is that the difference, like on a lease, would we get a better deal?
If we want, well, this is a slightly different financing option than going to your local dealer and getting leased that way. Even if we got a vehicle through MI deal and went to a dealer for leasing, it would still be kind of a, I'll call it, I hate to call it residential, but a personal lease. They don't have a setup. Enterprise is designed to do the lease, including maintenance. That's why actually the 465 was so high, it included five years of full maintenance on the vehicle. So, one other thing I did want to point out, the current mileage range is from 11,569 miles, and the high is only 19,562. So they are still very low mileage.
Yeah, it's only, what, 60,000 or 80,000 miles then in eight or 10 years?
Other comments? I agree with purchasing them. I think we probably all think that. I think the electric replacement part of the motion, eight years from now, was a little...
Fine, the next, the next, the council eight years from now can discuss that then. All right, what if I chop that part off and we motion to purchase them and at the end, purchase the leased vehicles at the end of the lease as discussed, but also going forward, don't, don't lease again at any point the code enforcement vehicles. How about that motion?
Support.
So your motion is just to purchase the seven vehicles?
Yes.
That's the end of your motion?
That and also direct administration not to further lease vehicles for code enforcement.
Okay. So there's nothing in, nothing in your motion? I just want to make sure. There's nothing in your motion about electrical cars?
I adjusted it just for you.
Maybe seven years from now, if we're still here, okay, but.
That's gone.
That's that.
That's gone now.
Okay, so I'll support the motion.
That's fine. He can. Motion by Cardi and supported by Harvey. Any other questions?
No.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, Item F, approval of special event application, Foreman Mills brand opening.
Mr. Mayor, I thought on this one, can we, since the recommended motion's denied, I thought maybe we just motion to... thought maybe we just motion to table it to the next meeting, and I know it's only two days before the event, but if they get everything together by the next meeting, we just approve it then? I didn't know if anyone had any objection to that, as opposed to just like motion to deny right now.
Well, is that a motion to table?
Sure, motion to table the special event application for Forman Mills' grand opening.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, item G, approval of special event application for the Memorial Day Parade.
Mr. Mayor, I would be delighted, I would be excited to approve the request for license from the Memorial Day Parade Committee that be held on May twenty-sixth, contingent on the providing proof of insurance, paying the approximate DPW cost of fourteen sixty-seven, and cooperating with the police department, which they always do, needs and paying the necessary costs.
Second that.
All right, any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right, item H, approval of special event application for Eaton Academy, Academy Field Day.
I would move to approve the special event application for Eaton Academy's Field Day on June thirteen, twenty twenty-five, contingent upon the following, all food trucks at the event must be permitted with an approved inspection at least five days prior to the event. Permits must be obtained for all tents larger than ten by ten. Applicants must obtain an approved block party permit, and general liability insurance must be obtained, naming the city of East Point as an additional insured in the amount of one million dollars.
Second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right, moving on to paper on bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we paid the bills in the amount of four million eight hundred, three thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and eleven cents.
Second that.
All right, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
All right, and with that, the second hearing of the public is open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, council, mayor, and others. It's a big problem now that six ninety-six is closing, gonna be closed for the next two years. Down on Eagle and Grashit, it's a big problem. That barbecue places open on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays, and they park on the corner of Grashit, they park on the corner, on the corner of Eagle, and you can't come in, you can't get in, you can't get out of there. That's wrong. And they, and going down Grashit to make a left to go south on Hayes, that traffic is so heavy now in the morning and in the afternoon at two, two-thirty or so until six, six-thirty, seven o'clock at night. They block that going eastbound, and they block it going across south of Hayes there now, that so much of traffic is going across eight mile since that six ninety-six is closed. And the basketball rim, they bring out down on Juliana between Brock and Crusade, and that bouncing that ball and hitting up against the rim and the backboard, that's too much of noise. You can't hear in your house there from that being played out there in the street and stuff. It has to stop. That's too annoying. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please just state your name for record?
Clifton Hall.
Thank you very much.
Yes, my name is Mr. Morton, good evening to you all. I stay on Veronica in East Point, and I'm having problems with my water. I've noticed dirt in the water from my kitchen sink and also from my baseball in the bathroom, and I wanted to know if I can have someone take care of that, and thank you.
So if you can't respond right now, would you mind walking over there and just leaving your information with, uh, Sue's staff there? Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. In the state of Michigan, we have a marijuana retailers excise tax of ten percent that the state collects on marijuana sales. The entirety of that money is distributed to cities based on the number of facilities operating in that city. For twenty twenty-four, cities each received, excuse me, cities received fifty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents per dispensary regardless of the dispensary's sales or hours of operation. They can be opened six hours a day or sixteen hours a day, they can make ten thousand dollars a year or ten million dollars a year, they still get that same amount of money. The last few meetings, I have asked for an explanation as to why Councilwoman Pashadlik amended a motion that would allow dispensaries to stay open until ten PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and midnight Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. On March twenty-eighth, when I asked this question, Councilman DeMonico answered that recreational marijuana had been talked about for seven years. Didn't answer the question. On April first, I asked this again, and Councilman DeMonico interjected and responded that he thought I was indicating that there would be an onslaught of crime, but there are plenty of communities with dispensaries, and that is not happening. Again, not answering the question. April fifteenth, I asked Councilwoman Pashadlik directly why she made this motion to extend hours until midnight four nights a week, when the marijuana facilities only asked to be open till eleven PM three nights a week, and none of our neighboring cities are open later than nine or ten o'clock at night. She didn't respond, but Councilman DeMonico stated that he was fine with the hours on recreational marijuana. Again, not answering the question, and I didn't, wasn't asking Councilman DeMonico. Councilwoman Pashadlik brought the issue of recreational marijuana to the council table in March of twenty twenty-four and has been very supportive of bringing this to the city, but for some reason has not spoken on why she wants our city to have facilities open until midnight Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Everything else closes earlier than that. Olive Garden closes at ten PM, Salvador Scalopini closes at nine PM, Cloverleaf eight PM, and Dairies ten PM. The only thing that's open between up and after ten PM are liquor stores and bars and now marijuana facilities. I would really like an answer as to why we would want marijuana facilities open till midnight when nobody else around us is doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Karen Moraiton, East Point resident.
I can't see it, but but I. Or.
Higher elk keep back. Anyways, my comments continuing on with the Detroit Animal Welfare Group. You know, Kelly and all the volunteers, you know, they have just done a tremendous job over the last decade plus in rehabilitating injured and orphaned wildlife. I did my wildlife training with her back, well, right before the executive order went in place for the pandemic. So unfortunately, I was never really able to, you know, rehab the animals myself because everything was shut down. No one who does rescue work is in it to get rich. We're not looking, you know, for money. We are busting our asses to save these animals' lives. And wildlife rehab is incredibly difficult because they're just so fragile. And this just pisses me off to no ends that Lucido has filed these bogus charges habituating deer when the DNR officer even admitted that it, well, no, let me take that back. As I said during the final pre-trial recently, it was brought to the judge's attention that the DNR officer encountered the deer that were not on Dawg's property but the field across the street. The DNR has had a vendetta against Dawg for the longest time. I mean, there's so much information coming out that they are going out of their way to purposely and maliciously get her shut down. And this also came out in court, and it was brought to the judge's attention that this plea deal, they're trying to, you know, get her to take a plea deal. Number one, she's done nothing, criminal. Number two, in taking that plea deal, they're gonna kill the deer, and we're not tolerating that at all.
You have three seconds.
Mayor Kleinfeld, as, you know, maybe you saw it last week, maybe you didn't, but Gideon, the poor dog, that, you know, I know your bosses, you know, finally announced, all right, we're almost done with the investigation. That poor dog suffered such horrible injuries being scalded, you know, and when when I was there doing my externship, I remember going through banker boxes and warrant, warrant requests that were never fulfilled.
Thank you.
Dawg was a part of protecting this dog and rehabilitating this dog.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the second hearing, anyone else? All right, seeing none, the second hearing, the public is closed. We'll go on to mayor and council reports. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. I want everybody to go home safely, be mindful of the construction, pardon our dust while we remodel, as they say, and enjoy a nice, relatively early night.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, the gentleman that came forward about the parking space, has somebody driven out there in administration to take a look at it, and if it's dangerous, did they know how to eliminate the parking space? Either do away with the chalk markers or put a sign up, no parking?
Need a little more information.
You need more information? Okay. Who would you get that from? You know the location, right?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, that's, can you leave your address over there? And if you hang around, we're about to wrap up the meeting too, so. Yes, yes.
Yeah, the lady we can't see.
Or the chief at the end.
We can't see her, is she still there?
She's still little.
Okay, the other thing, Jennifer, I wasn't here last meeting. I was down in Florida picking blueberries and visiting my sister. I'm gonna tell you why I voted yes for that motion. You deserve an answer. You may not agree with my solution or my answer, but we do have a number of taverns in East Point, and I don't have a problem with any of them, but they are open till midnight, maybe one o'clock in the morning. So I'm thinking in my head, well, if the taverns can stay that late that open, maybe the marijuana people can too. Now, nobody might agree with that, you might disagree with that, but at least I'm telling you why. Now you now you know why Harvey did that. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April twenty-sixth, we had our beautification commission litter cleanup, and we had eighteen volunteers out pick up twenty-seven bags of garbage, including the mayor here, our city attorney. Councilman Curly was there at the end helping feed everybody, and our old colleague up here, Sarah Lucido, now county commissioner, she paid for all the food at the end, so everybody got some pizza and salad, so, you know, if you're willing to pick up some trash and get fed at the end, come out to our next one. But also wanted to thank everybody on the commission, and I hope I look back through pictures to try and make sure I'm not missing anybody here, but Craig Wodecki, Chelsea Head, Lakita Cobb, Dorothy Stover, and Rachel Sullivan from our commission were out there. Vicky Coleman donated some bags and trash pickers, so thank you, Vicky, and our DPW director, Darren, was out there, so great event each year. And actually, strangely, I drove, well, I always drive to pick up all the bags and throw them in the back of my pickup truck, but I try to check out kind of the medians as I'm doing that, and I'd have to say I saw less garbage this year than I've seen any other year, so that was cool. We still picked up a ton. Those last two bags I picked up, that the city attorney got, those were probably the heaviest ones, maybe other than the, we also cleaned up some glass at the, one of the panes of glass in a bus shelter broke, and we kind of left that there, and I think the DPW must have picked it up, so thank you to them, because that was, that was obviously heavy. There's a, there's a lot of glass in those panes. But yeah, if we do that again, hopefully you can come on out. And then on Saturday, this was pretty neat, Cantor Elementary, which no longer exists as a school and is, of course, now Love Life Church, and thanks to Pastor Kevin Lancaster, let us open up a time capsule that was buried in nineteen ninety-nine, the K through five class. I was in sixth at this point, but I was still like, I'm part of this, so I I showed up, and my brother was, though, he was in third grade, and they pulled a shirt out and was like, oh, Adam DeMonico, so I, shirts in my garage right now, probably have to wash it a few times, maybe, because there, we did get water inside of the time capsule, unfortunately, but they pulled out letters, and you could pretty much read all of them, we took pictures of all of them, I did post on Facebook, maybe I'll have to share on my page so it's easier to find, but that was pretty neat, there was like a VHS of Blues Clues and some Pokemon cards in it, and like one of those camcorder tapes and a cassette tape, which I think those were like custom, we'll have to figure out how to play at some point, I don't know what is on them. What else? Some other, I guess that was probably the most exciting stuff, but there was a handful of us out there, so that that was, that was pretty neat. Again, thanks to Pastor Kevin Lancaster for letting us dig up his yard, but frankly, if you go by, I bet you can't find it, they kind of dug it up where they could just kind of like sod and put it back down, I bet you can't even tell where it was, but we did have to leave the time capsule in there because we couldn't pull it out, and it was kind of breaking apart, so we just pulled everything out of it, but that was neat, and then, yeah, just happy Mother's Day to everyone, I know sometimes my mom's watching the meeting, so happy Mother's Day if you're watching, and happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, so that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pashadlik.
I just have one quick thing to say. It was about Urban Seed, our East Point Community Garden. My sister mentioned they were on Channel Seven News today, so it was very nice to see a positive light on our city, and I'd like to commend them for the hard work that they do and encourage our residents to join them and participate. It's a really worthwhile project, and they do a great job there at the community garden on Nine Mile. Also like to encourage everyone to be patient with the construction and continue to patronize our local businesses as they do need the business, so I hope that you are still able to get through the construction just to patronize those local businesses, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I would just say, I don't know if you had mentioned it, Mr. DeMonico, that Sarah Lucido had purchased the food for it, and then also I believe Harvey was there pushing the pizza on everyone and trying to get us to eat another slice. get us to eat another slice, so the cleanup was really nice. And I would just say happy Mother's Day and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Your choice, Kim. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:48.